Okay, I've got 6:30. Want a call to order the regular scheduled Board of Education meeting for June the 19th of 2018. Nancy, will you call? Roll, please.
Mr. Beavers.
Here.
Dr. Corley absent, Mrs. Dorff.
Here.
Mr. Green absent, Mrs. James.
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Rennie?
Here. Alright, time for the Pledge of Allegiance against Mr. Quigley. Will you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic whose it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we need to approve the agenda. Mr. Grody, are there any changes?
No changes.
I will accept a motion to approve the agenda.
Someone?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We need to approve the consent agenda which incorporates District 186's regular board meeting minutes dated 5/15/18, District 186's special board minute meetings dated 5/24/18, Tri-County regular board meeting minutes dated 5/9/18, Tri-County bills for June of 2018, applications and reports. I will accept a motion to approve. Second?
Second. Who is this?
We got it.
Okay, Beavers and Dorff.
Yes. Nancy?
Mr. Beavers?
Yeah.
Mrs. Dorff?
Yes.
Dr. Corley absent, Mr. Green absent, Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Rennie?
Yes, motion carries. Need to approve the District 186 bills for June of 2018. Does the Board have any questions? So please let the rest of the Board know which page you are on.
I have one question actually on, it's the activity account, and you may not know this answer. The class of 2016, that small amount was disbursed, so that's good. Class of 2018, they have almost 2,500, and we talked at one time, when a class has that money left...
Is that 18 or 17?
18.
It says 18.
So we need to give that to an actual student, let them take that over.
Do they have senior fest expenses, I'm maybe assuming?
Well, there was a dispersment of 900. Oh, sorry, that's received. They dispersed 2,800. They still have 2,400.
I don't know, pretty much the idea, do you?
And I, I mean, we don't need an answer, I guess I'm just saying...
I don't, I will talk to that class sponsor.
Yeah.
I mean, typically, they don't leave out much money, so I would think there would be some things coming in related, maybe that weren't paid through senior fest and stuff.
As long as senior fest is paid up, which should be.
Yeah, I mean, we have, we have money on hand, so that's the question, is there something else they were gonna do with that? I don't have, I don't have an answer to that.
Obviously, we're never in a hurry to just disperse that, since we just got rid of 2016.
Right.
I just don't want $2,400 to go away from a class.
Right, so I'll have to, I'll check with, um, Ms. Philpatrick and see if there's things hanging out there, and I'm not even sure who the senior class sponsor is, I'll have my head, I'll check that. I'll find that out for you later.
Um, I'd like to have a question of a couple bills. One was on page four, I can't tell you which page four. Uh, it was part of the pest control, and one of the, uh...
Bedbugs?
Yeah, the student home bedbugs.
We paid, we paid for the chemicals to spray a home. Um, we had two students in two different buildings, um, and they were just gonna keep coming back if we didn't assist that family. Um, so, in, in order to save us thousands of dollars down the run, down the line, we paid for the chemicals. And EnviroTech actually did the spraying for free.
And we, Samron did, um, high school ramp entrance. That isn't part of the auditorium?
No, it's not the north, the north door, um, that we were using, um, for entrance in the school year, for ADA accessibility. We put a ramp there, knowing that, you know, in the future, it would also be helpful to have that as an entrance exit for handicap accessibility.
Okay.
We actually thought we might use that for graduation also, but that ended up being not the way we wanted it to come and go.
Any other questions from the Board? Then I will accept a motion to approve the District 186 bills for June of 2018.
Someone?
And a second?
Second.
Nancy?
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorff?
Yes.
Mr. Green absent, Mr. Beavers?
Yeah.
Dr. Corley absent, Mr. Rennie?
Yes, motion carries. Communications?
Yes.
To whom it may concern, I am writing this letter to the Murphysboro Community Unit School District 186 to inform you of my resignation effective immediately. I have accepted a special education teaching position in my hometown of St. Reno. I have decided that this would be best, would be the best career move for my family and myself. I would like to thank Murphysboro High School and the Board for giving me the opportunity these last three years to teach at the high school. I have truly enjoyed my time working here. Thank you for this opportunity to grow in my teaching experience. Sincerely, Kyle Smith.
Recommendation is to approve his resignation.
Alright. For the recommendation from administration to accept the resignation, I will accept a motion to approve that.
My question.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Dear Murphysboro Community Unit School District 186 Board of Education, I am writing to inform you that I am retiring at the end of the 2020-21 school year. I will retire with 10 years of service in the Murphysboro School District and a total of 35 years of service in education. I would like to thank the Administration, Board of Education, parents and students for giving me the opportunity to teach and coach in the Murphysboro Community Unit School District. I will always remain a Red Devil. Thank you, Gary Carter.
We recommend his retirement.
Alright, you've heard, uh, recommendation from the administration, I'll accept a motion. Did you approve this?
Yeah.
Now that I hear it, it brings tears to my eyes.
I'll accept a motion to, to approve. So, and a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We wish him well in his retirement, as we have all of our retirees.
Dear Murphysboro District 186 Board of Education, please accept this letter as a formal announcement of my retirement at the end of the 2021-22 school year. I am looking forward to this milestone in my life. I love my job and will continue to teach to my fullest potential for the next four years. Thank you, Cheryl Rose.
The recommendation is to approve the retirement. Alright, you've heard the recommendation from administration to accept the retirement, I will accept a motion to approve.
Someone?
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and we wish her well as well.
Dear Mr. Grody and Board of Education, please accept this letter notifying you of my intention to retire from the position of certified school nurse at the end of the 2022-23 school year. Thank you for your continued support as I work towards retirement. Best regards, Charlene Moore.
And the recommendation is to approve the retirement.
I'll accept a motion to approve that recommendation. So, and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we wish her well as well.
Dear Mr. Grody and Board of Education, as you may recall, my husband and I welcomed our third child on May 25th. With our growing family, I have decided that it would be best to resign from my professional career in order to care for our children. From my year-long internship in 2009 with Mrs. Schimpf and Mrs. Gedding to now, I want to thank all of those who I have encountered along the way, as they have given me guidance, support and experience that has shaped me into the educator that I am today. The friendships and memories made within the district are ones that I will cherish forever. Thank you again for the wonderful years as special education teacher at General John A. Logan, and later as a third grade teacher at General John A. Logan, and currently at Carruthers Elementary School. Sincerely, Jordan Suits.
And we wish her well, as we recommend her resignation.
Alright, you've heard the recommendation, I will accept a motion to accept that recommendation.
Someone?
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Dear Board of Education, I have thoroughly enjoyed coaching baseball the past two seasons. It is a wonderful experience to see students outside of the classroom and to have the opportunity to coach them in the sport I love. Due to the fact that my daughter is becoming more and more involved in extracurricular activities herself, and the demands of coaching forcing me to miss a lot of her activities, I am at this time submitting my resignation from the position of assistant JV baseball coach. I want to thank you for the opportunity to perform in this role, and I will continue to root for the success of the MHS baseball program moving forward. Sincerely, George Mutcher.
We recommend his resignation from his stipend position.
Accept a motion to approve that recommendation. And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I have one myself, that, um, that the Chicago conference is coming up in November, November 16th.
I thought you were gonna...
I didn't too.
No, no.
I didn't.
November 16th through the 18th. So if you would like to go, let me know. I'd like to get everybody registered early this year, if possible. So, think about it and send me an email or something.
Okay, that's it. Moving to item number eight, fishbowl items. I think we had a couple.
Okay. The Southern Illinois Minors Baseball Club announces MHS Red Devils Boys Basketball Coach Daryl Murphy will be inducted into the Southern Illinois Minors High School Coaching Hall of Fame at Rentwood Park on Tuesday, May 29th. Unfortunately, the game was rained out on this occasion, and the induction has yet to be rescheduled. Regardless, congratulations to Coach Daryl Murphy on the milestone honor, and best of luck as he continues to guide the Red Devil Boys Basketball Program. Lynn Navara.
And we also have something from Cody Allemeyer, the principal at the high school. The high school is going through major construction and electrical projects at this time, and I want to thank a few people for the work they have been putting in. Darren Ripley, Steve Carrington and Kevin Haldeman have been working very hard during this process. Thank you to those three for everything they do for MHS behind the scenes. I would also like to thank Mrs. Aylers and Mr. Keener for allowing our staff to move into their buildings while MHS is without power. The counselors, Dana Batson and myself are all calling General John A. Logan School home for the next few weeks. Mrs. Patterson is using the middle school art room for art camp. Thank you to Mrs. Aylers and Mr. Keener for the hospitality. Teamwork makes the dream work.
Very good. Is that it? Just the two?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, item nine is Freedom of Information Act request. We had a couple, it looks like. We had a couple. Tabitha Sessions requested a copy of the current fee schedule for community use of school facilities, and Jenny Lee, speaking for Ballot Ready, requested information about our Board of Education structure and when the terms end for each board member. She also requested information about the superintendent's current contractual term. And all of that information was given in a timely manner. Very good. Thank you. Item 10 is recognition of the audience. The Board of Education welcomes the audience to make public or employee comments. The Board has set aside time in the agenda specifically for this purpose. Pursuant to Board Policy 2.230, each speaker shall be limited to a five-minute presentation. Please be aware that while this is the time for the public to express its opinions and/or concerns, the Board may or may not comment regarding public presentations. If a matter of public comment warrants discussion or action of the Board of Education, such discussion or action will be added to the agenda of a future meeting. First, are there any public concerns? Yes, sir. Please come forward, and I think you know the routine, Robbie, since we're being recorded.
Robbie Williams? Maybe I'm unaware, but I wanted to know if there is a proposal or plan in place as far as the renovation or repair of the track facility at MHS, as well as the football facilities at MHS?
Um, we have a quote on what an astroturf, uh, football field and track would be. Um, and right now, the Facilities Committee is trying to get with the city to talk about various options to see exactly what the next big steps are gonna be. Um, but yeah, the, the track desperately needs to be fixed, and, uh, what we've needed to decide is are we gonna do the football field as astroturf, or are we gonna do the football field, um, with a new sprinkler system? So, we gotta find the cost price point on that. So, at this point, there's no big plans. We're still trying to put the big pieces together.
So, I mean, we would be a year in advance at best?
Yeah.
Alright, good enough. Anybody else?
Yes, sir. One example is, last month when I came here, um, I had an opinion. My opinion was changed based on what the Board was explaining as far as, um, summer PEs and, you know, the being audited, and things had to change. Couple things I wrote, I'm still looking for some clarity on personally, if, like, if you would, was, uh, one, um, when Mike was told things were gonna have to change, at that point, it was verbal, really nothing was wrote down. Um, so we're still winging it to say, um, so Mike would say on a course of, I mean, I'm more interested in the, uh, I'm gonna say the dinner and the AD department, or AD, um, physician. I don't think the AD physician has anything to do with whether Mike's rowing, rowing the boat or not rowing the boat, if you will. Two, the dinner, he's always been reimbursing the past, to my understanding, and I, my question would be like, why would, why would we change that without, I guess, you know, prior, oh, put the brakes on, pull, I said, put the brakes on, pull, excuse me, lane, you know, I mean, you know, we gotta do something different here. I recognize it takes time to get policy into place. Me, I'm a dictator out of my job. I get to say do this, do that, and that's how we're gonna do it. I mean, I realize there's, there's rules and such, and I just want to know those two things. I mean, I guess, why, why, they have AD, the AD position and the reimbursement of the dinner.
So by the dinner, you mean the Midland? It's like a parent-athlete combo thing that you have annually, right? Okay, just wanna make sure I'm talking about that. Can we discuss timelines and, um, how they all fell? Maybe that's something we need to look at, and then go back to Danny.
I'd rather go with a present, I, if, if borderline's on personnel issues, so I wanna just make sure I don't misspeak here off the top of my head, so I'm not comfortable responding. Um, I'd be happy to sit down with Mr. Poole and discuss it later, I mean, or with a board member.
To what degree you can.
Yeah, to what degree I can, so.
About the AD or the dinner?
Um...
Or both?
Yes.
It would be both. The problem is, is that there, there's just some things I won't be able to, to speak about, so.
Here?
Here or there, man.
Okay, I'll try that.
If I can't say it here, I can't say it to you in private either, but I can, um, listen and we can talk, so.
Alright.
Any other public concerns? Alright, how about employee? I see a hand.
That's me. Am I the only one?
Well, so far.
Um, I'm Melinda Pearson. I'm the social worker at General John A. Logan. I'm also the vice president of the MEA, but I'm speaking to you as the, uh, social worker at General John A. Logan. I'm not representing our membership with this. I've sent, I sent you all an email, and I've talked to a couple of you, but I'm just continuing to bang my drum, that I know tonight, um, I believe it's a part of the consideration tonight, whether or not General John A. Logan will get a dean of students or an assistant principal position, or whether or not we will, uh, get additional aides for our, for our building. I've talked to Mr. Grody about this, and he actually spoke at our building forum, or asked, asked at our building forum in April, our staff, what it was that we'd prefer, aides or an assistant principal slash dean of student position. And as you can imagine, when you ask teachers what they want, they say everything, and that's what they said. They said both. And, and the reason for that, though, is that I understand that y'all have done a wonderful job, and I'm, I'm thrilled as a member of this district that we are doing that additional hiring at the third through middle school levels for the teachers that are needed, and coming more in line with that funding formula recommendations. Um, even though those aren't the schools that I'm at as a, as an employee of the district, y'all made the right decision, and I'm really happy with it. I understand that we can't make those fund, or we can't make those staffing decisions at our building because there's just not enough physical space. And I, when I spoke at the, I believe it was the March meeting, when y'all were discussing it, I said, "Please don't make our building have to wait for those staffing needs to be made until we have new buildings," because that could take forever and ever. Um, and, you know, I asked to please not, and, and the response I was given, both publicly and privately by Mr. Grody, was that in, in the short term, we'd like to have those, we'd like to get additional aides, so we can't necessarily reduce the class sizes, but we could reduce the, the burden on the teachers and, and increase that, uh, student performance through the help of some aides. When Mr. Grody talked to our building forum in April, when he asked us, "Which do you prefer, aides or help in an administrative role?" We said, "Well, it kinda depends on, are you talking two aides or 12 aides? That, you know, that's a big difference." And, and, and he said, "It would probably be up to three. It would be the maximum." And I, things may have changed between then and now, but I just wanted to say that up to three aides is not for, you know, for three grade levels, you're looking at maybe one grade, one per grade level. That's not gonna provide the significant, uh, improvement to our class sizes that would be comparable to the other, what the other grade levels have gotten in, in, uh, in your attempts to get closer in line with the funding formula. And in fact, you'd have to do somewhere between five and seven aides to make that comparable. Um, and so, yeah, we want the five, seven aides. But we also, we also know that our administrator needs some extra help, because even this past year, she had a load of evaluations, and next year, she has a lot more. And what that means on a day-to-day basis is that parent phone calls, building management things, disciplinary issues, academic meetings, are things that she just, they fall through the cracks. And when those things fall through the cracks, the teachers, as best they can, make up the, you know, they pick up the slack, but there are things that we don't have the authority to do and, and don't have the ability to do. And those are the types of things I don't like. As a staff member, it just makes everything more difficult when things fall through the cracks. Anybody in any position, in education or otherwise, you need a boss. You need a boss that's there and responsive and able to do his or her job, and she's just got more than she can do. It's already that way now. Even when we were K5, before we, you know, before the evaluations, it was really hard to have a building of 450 kids with one administrator. And, um, as the evaluation process has become more cumbersome, then it's, it, those, those issues just continue to build on themselves. Um, it's also important to note, something that you may not think of, is that every time there's an administrative meeting, you know, whether it's at the district or, or a PBIS meeting, or something where the administrator has to be there, we have no administrator in our building at all. So if Carla's out for half a day for a meeting at the district office, or for a meeting, a curriculum council meeting, or a meeting about, you know, any one of the thousands of things she may legitimately need to have a meeting for, we have no administrator in the building. Nobody that can even have the authority to handle a discipline issue, a crisis, we have no one. So we really need that extra help. We needed it before we had a new funding formula. We needed it before we moved to attendance centers. Um, but we also need additional aides in order to bring our, to bring our student-teacher ratio. We can't bring the student-teacher ratio down, but we can alleviate some of that, some of that work on the teachers, and just give the teachers at the lower levels, give the teachers just somebody that can then help with homework and instruction and the types of things that, uh, that an aide can help with. So, I've already, I've already sent y'all an email. I've talked to a lot of you. I'll continue to bang the drum, but I wanted to say it out loud and on the record.
Thank you.
Can I ask, um, those, the number, I don't know, Melinda or Mr. Grody or whatever, the evals are on teachers and non-certs, right? We have to do evals on non-certs?
Yeah, the, what we really are counting are the teachers, the, the teacher evaluations, because they involve a, a pre-meeting, a post-meeting, and then the number of evaluations.
In multiple or not.
So, yeah, and the main difference between the General and Carruthers right now is there's a lot of new teachers at the General. And so when you do a non-tenured or a new teacher, uh, evaluation, you do really two observations that you would do with a tenured teacher. A tenured gets an evaluation every other year, so you do at least two informal observations plus that formal observation that you have the pre and post meetings for. And so that does take a lot of time, just once, but then with a non-tenured, you gotta get both of those done before, you know, the January, February timeframe for your reductions.
And I'd also say, and that asked me a, a good question, that, you know, are, the evaluation process, to a certain degree, is informed by the parent committee, um, which is administrators and, and, uh, teachers. And to a certain degree, the, the level of that evaluation process being as cumbersome as it is, is because the parent committee set up the parameters. And I'm not on that parent committee, it doesn't, but I, it does seem like it's too cumbersome. So I would say that there's probably an argument to having that, that process, uh, made less cumbersome. But doing that, getting that change made between now and August is not realistic, and even if you could do it, that wouldn't be the best way to make that kind of wholesale change, you know, to do it, you know, uh, just in order to meet a deadline so that we didn't have to, to do that hiring or give that help. Um, and, and also, even, even with the reduction, the parent committee is of course bound by state law that says, you know, and, and regardless, the model of evaluations that's required is cumbersome. So even if you had a very streamlined and very easy process for an administrator or for a teacher, it would be significantly different than what it was eight or nine years ago.
Tell me, why do we evaluate non-certs? Do we have to?
I don't, that, that's above my pay grade.
Because I mean, every year, I feel like we give non-certs X raise, and I, I don't know that I've ever heard discussion that it's based on their evaluation, so why, why is it necessary to evaluate non-certs?
Because the people in your organization should be evaluated, they should be, you know, held to a certain standard, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, I get that big, I mean, it wouldn't be a way to handle an issue if there is one, rather than going through this process with every non-cert. Oh, I'm just trying to think of ways to...
To my understanding, the area...
This process is really just one meeting, though.
Yeah, it's less cumbersome.
Yeah. I was gonna say my understanding...
Okay, so one meeting with how many people, though?
I mean, if you had to...
But if there was an issue, you would, wouldn't you want something in writing from an evaluation that you addressed it?
You'd do that anyway? You couldn't write something up when the issue developed and you handled it, and this is how I handled it? I'm just throwing out ideas to...
I, I don't know that...
It's something to talk about at a different time.
I don't know the answer to your question about non-certs specifically, but I do know that even if, even if there was no evaluation process of the non-certs, that, the, the reason that Carla's underwater is because of the requirements for the certified teaching. So even if that problem, what you're suggesting, even if that problem were solved with a magic wand tonight, you'd still have the problem of Carla having 100 evaluations that are really cumbersome.
And it's not just the, the, what, what you need to understand is you schedule an evaluation, and then low and behold, you're dealing with a, a bus situation, or a fight broke out, or something. And so if you don't have a dean or someone that can handle the discipline, you know, there's still, sometimes you get a phone call, or, you know, something happens, and then you've gotta reschedule it. And that's never good, because, you know, the teacher's ready for that observation to be seen, and it's just not right. It's not fair.
What's the percentage increase for a dean of students?
Isn't it a percentage of a, isn't there a formula?
It's stipend, is it?
Or it's a stipend, it's just a set stipend?
The way we've handled it in, in the past for dean of students is they're on the same salary schedule as teachers, and then any additional duties beyond the, the day is, is handled at the, the hourly, approved, board-approved hourly rate, which is currently $16 an hour. So for, for time before, for ballgame duty, it's just hourly rate.
So, I guess just ballpark figure, what would the additional cost be then?
Honestly, for an elementary building, it, there wouldn't be that many, it wouldn't be a supervision issue, so it'd be more just a, a teacher's salary.
Well, I mean, wouldn't you want some sort of incentive for somebody to wanna do that?
There's a stipend, right? So there's, I don't know, just the hourly?
No.
Oh, good.
That's what we've done in the past, but we can discuss that tonight.
How many of those evaluations are just like informal? Or is there a written response required on all of those, like?
Yeah, there's not a, a written, what happens is, is the, um, the informals, the, the teacher goes, uh, the principal goes through, writes it up, and then it gets submitted to the, to the teacher, and then the teacher can respond if they, if they so choose, but they don't have to, correct?
Every informal is written, no?
Yeah.
How?
Now, every time they're in the classroom, they're not doing an informal, you know, I mean, so.
And how many evaluations are there at Carruthers, then? Just for comparison of...
Am I, am I done?
Right now, and, and the data from the evaluation system is, is going in. At the General, I've got, through my count of the staff there, there's eight non, uh, non-tenured individuals who get evaluated basically two times a year, and there's 12 tenured at the General John A. Logan.
And they're every other year?
And the, well, no, that would be next year, by my calculations. I've got 12 tenured staff members that are going to be evaluated. Um, it could, the other thing is, is when we hire people, it's not always balanced. You know, you, you hire a bunch of people, and then it, they get tenured at the same time, and so you, you're on a different cycle. At Carruthers, we've got four non-tenured, um, but I've got Suits, I don't think she was in this, yeah, Mrs. Suits was not added to that. That's gonna be another non-tenured for Carruthers after today, 'cause we're gonna have to replace her position. her position.
That'd be five.
So she'll have five non-tenured and sixteen tenured. So there's more tenure to add Carruthers. Both of the buildings really.
While we're on it, then what's, what's the middle school and high school then?
I don't have those numbers in front of me, but for the middle school and my school both have an assistant principal or a dean of students that allows them some relief to be able to get those evaluations done. But I, I would imagine, I would imagine they're all.
No, not a discipline.
No, but what happens is.
Oh, okay, all right, all right. I misunderstood what you were saying.
But I would say those numbers are probably pretty accurate. Do you, either of you know what your evaluation numbers are for next year offhand? How many tenured?
I would guess sixteen, somewhere in there.
I think the way I've looked.
Not total.
Cause you're gonna have a few non-tenured next year.
Yeah, those, I'll have more this coming year because we are more non-tenured, so those.
Right.
I think when I looked at it, and I'm looking at dividing it between myself and the assistant principal here, coming in, here in the future, it's like around eighteen for me and twelve to fourteen for the assistant principal. So I know Mr. Wilson, last year, I think he told me he did thirty-four total.
How many of those were new teachers? Any idea?
We're getting.
Or how about you, the eighteen that you're gonna do for this coming school year, how many of those are new teachers?
Let me.
Thirty-four, and you gotta remember, when, when people start throwing out these numbers, you gotta make sure we're judging apples with apples. Because, you know, um, when Carla and I were talking about the numbers, she was up in the nineties, but that's because she was looking at a non-tenured as, she was counting a non-tenured as six, because there's gotta be two informals and a formal, and then two informals and a formal, that's the minimum. So you gotta do at least six.
So it's like all the layers of that many valves?
In our building right now, tenured teachers, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-four tenured teachers. But some of them won't be evaluated this year because they were evaluated last year.
Yeah, but what I'm asking is the eighteen that you said that you're gonna take for this upcoming school year, how many of those are non-tenured teachers?
Um, I'm gonna do the non-tenured teachers.
So all eighteen are yours?
Not necess, not.
He's saying, either, where, how many non-tenured teachers do you have on your load?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, probably eleven by the end of summer.
So you're gonna have eleven non-tenured and seven tenured.
So that'd be twenty-two plus seven, is the way I count them. Seven non-tenured is twice.
Okay. Can I throw something in?
Sure.
The evaluations in themselves are not really that bad. I mean, they're time-consuming, obviously, that's when we are now doing the SLOs. Those, none of us truthfully are exactly sure how to do those a hundred percent, kind of working our way through them. Those are gonna take some time, I think.
And there's gonna be a huge learning curve with that.
It's not just the evaluations, now you're doing SLOs and everybody's off here.
Yeah, so every tenured teacher that does a observation, if they do an observation this year, they did an observation this year, that means they're gonna sit down and do, have a meeting and go over their SLO process, which is student learning.
Objectives.
Objectives, yeah, thank you. The SLO is a, uh, will be the second other year, so every other year. So pretty much every teacher in the district will be.
Evaluating every year.
Every year, either through the SLO or through the thing. And then the summative, uh, it, it won't be until they're done with the, well, the second year that they'll actually get a summative ranking, cause you gotta take both years into account and put it all together.
Doing SLOs and non-evaluation?
Yes.
So, so our performance piece, so, so say we have a senior teacher, the performance piece is one year, the next year they do the student learning objective, and then that is summative for that two years, and then it starts over the next year.
That seems crazy.
But do you have to? Is that the state requirement? Oh, parent committee, okay.
And it's, it was, they really wanted the SLO to be separated from it, and they feel like the student data should be looked at every year, so when you are doing your performance piece or the observation piece, you know, the teachers are still doing assessments and looking at the data, but then the following year, they can really focus in on, on that student data.
Both sides wanted that, or?
Yeah.
Well, it really doesn't matter, you gotta do it one year or the other anyways, isn't that correct?
Usually you base your SLOs and then that's what you're evaluating, I mean, you're evaluating, that's a part of your evaluation, so.
So in other words, you guys, you, you would do it in the same year?
Yes.
And then that off-year, just nothing?
But then we still have the SLO each year, I guess, that's all.
But you wouldn't have to.
For somebody, is what you're saying, right?
For the people that we're not evaluating.
No, you wouldn't do one then.
It's kind of the same.
The thing is, is our parent committee's gotten together and has met, we've talked about various things. We are still, um, you know, collecting artifacts and, and doing that for the domains that aren't observable either. A lot of districts have walked away from doing the artifacts as well, so it's, uh...
So then this is adding more than is necessary, which is increasing the workload.
Okay, any other employee concerns? Yes, ma'am.
I just, I have an intention of actually talking to, just going to kind of comment on.
You can state your name, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, Tracy Landaway. Um, I just kinda wanted to go off of what Melinda said about the overload of the principal, you know, for Carla and her building and for whoever ends up in our building.
Player to be named later. Player to be named later, I'm sorry.
Right. Um, that it is true, it's, it's, they're completely overloaded with responsibilities of needing to be in the building and taking care of discipline and day-to-day stuff and then being pulled out of the building. There were a lot of times this year that we also had no one in the building, um, other than if you have a problem, ask Linda. Linda's the secretary, so she's got her own load, and so I think it would be a consideration if you were, you know, thinking about that, that it would be needed actually in those buildings, so.
All right, any other employee concerns?
Yeah, my name is Mike Lane. I've been due before, about the same situation. I had a meeting two hours long on my summer with Mr. Grody and Ms. Bush yesterday concerning my activity accounts, of which, uh, they have no issues with, because these are my protocols of what I did with it. They've all been signed off by the protocols that the administration has provided of what is needed to be done. I also then asked them about the five hundred and seventy-eight dollars due to me because of taking our families that worked for the monies, uh, from the volleyball program through the concession stand, uh, in a celebratory dinner at Midlands, in which all rules and regulations from the school district were followed. I was giving a number of reasons why that I cannot get reimbursed. First reason for Mr. Grody was it wasn't board-approved. It doesn't have to be board-approved. You guys don't approve anything that's under a thousand dollars, and it never had to approve anything that I've done out of my activity account for twenty years. So that would mean if it has to be board-approved, then anytime I would have a pizza party or buy a team dinner, then I've gotta get approval from you, which is pretty mundane. Second reason he said that I couldn't get reimbursed is he had talked to a few coaches and he said that, uh, they don't do that, so he didn't feel that I should do that for my program. I shouldn't spend that money in that way. That's a judgment call, okay? I'm not telling you at this point how to spend your money or his, okay? And, uh, by the success of my program, uh, it runs pretty well. I don't think anybody can argue that. And we do that as a family. We run as a family. We build trust as a family and we work together as a family. And so, um, that is all an opinion base, all right? And so then it was stated, the third reason that we can't reimburse you, which is not out of your funds, it's out of the funds that we raised as a program, we're not gonna allow you to get reimbursed out of your money, is because parents were involved. Now, if it was just students and coaches, then it would be fine. But again, IHSA didn't have a problem with it, I told you that at the last board meeting. There's no school code violation, there's no district code violation, there's nothing in writing that says a coach cannot pay for, uh, dinners out of an activity account, um, to their parents or to their, uh, managers or to their student athletes or whatever the case may be. Okay, so the three reasons that are given to me have no, uh, no water held to them, there's no board policies, there's nothing in writing from you guys. And if you guys wanna change the way you do things and operate differently in the future, then I'm sure that all coaches will then abide by that. But as I operated for twenty years and then all of a sudden, as you have paid for those things, well, just back to the parents, for twenty years, we've done a banquet. And the volleyball money for that banquet pays for that banquet, and that pays for parents. Friends of Murphysboro volleyball, my family, my dad, my mom, other friends that supported the program throughout the year, they come to this banquet to here or celebrate with us. They've been paid for out of that account. So that paid for friends of volleyball, parents of volleyball, and athletes of volleyball. And they said, well, you charge for that banquet. Well, no, I don't. Just like with summer workouts, if you can't afford it, we don't charge it in Murphysboro. We want you to come and celebrate with us. So it was a donation base. When they came to the banquet, they donated if they want. They brought ten kids, they don't have to donate, it doesn't matter. We're here to celebrate a cause. So there is no difference in what I did versus a banquet or versus going to the only place that was open on a Tuesday night after you just beat a twenty-nine and one team is Midlands that can hold that kind of crowd that wanted to come and celebrate. Gratuitity alone on that bill was over a hundred dollars, cause you've got over sixty seven, sixty people. So you look at a bill of five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and you think, whoa, now you can't pay for this. We can't, it's not even out of your pocket, number one, but number two, there's another rule that says that you can't do that. And this is absolutely, to me, um, a concern as an employee that you all of a sudden, have people just wake up and say, no, you can't do that. No, you can't do that. But when there's no writing involved in that or any district policy or any past practice, well, past practice is out the window in this case because it's been done for twenty years, but it, when it works for the administration, you hold your hat on past practice. And I don't agree with that. I would just like my five hundred and seventy-eight dollars so we can move on. You can change whatever policies you want. Okay, but the fact of the matter is, you go to the next level, it's not gonna, it, that, that's awful. That's awful. There's no teamwork here, there's no trust, there's no buildings of things. And you can build all the buildings you want and do all that stuff, but when you, when you don't have that, it's just, it's sad. Being a person from Murphysboro, being somebody who'd be here for a long time, that's a sad deal. So I wanna know if you guys fully understand why I'm not getting my money.
I'd like to say four things first.
Sure, and, okay.
The, the, the first one was, I didn't say it wasn't board-approved, I said it wasn't previously approved, and that got us into the conversation, well, the banquet's not previously approved. It also got us into the conversation that at the middle school, there is not a process where the, uh, principal signs off as the high school, okay? Number two, uh, I didn't talk to a few coaches. What I said was, others aren't having these issues. We're not having, I, I, I know that there's been issues before where Jan has denied activity fund expenditures. I said, you know, we're not having these issues, and that was when we were talking about the rules and the regulations. I was trying to say, you know, there's just common sense though, and I think I even used the word common sense, and that others aren't, you know, there is a standard of, of what should be done with those things. The third thing was, it wasn't that the parents were involved, it was that, yeah, we don't pay for parent meals out of this event, but, um, this wasn't like, when you go and have your team meals, that's beforehand, it's something that you do because your kids need to eat before they go to their games, and, and I get that, right? This was a decision made after the fact, you guys want, I'm, I'm proud of you, you did a great job. It was a decision though that you made without approval, and that got back to, the rules and regulations aren't written, right? So I said I was going to review the activity accounts and see what other things have been denied, cause I do wanna be consistent with this, before I decide how to go with that check, and I haven't had a chance to check that yet, so those were the four things.
Okay, well, this has been going on since April and here we are in June. And now all of a sudden, it's important to you to look at and see if I can get paid back.
Mike, I need, I need you to kinda wrap it up, I've given you more than the five minutes. I think you need to have that discussion. It can't be decided right here in, in open session like this, it's gotta be decided right there.
So I, I, you know, whatever you guys do with the middle school entity, that's off to you, okay? But this is a situation that I'd like to get my money back where it's not black and white, and, um, just because you have an opinion on how it should be spent, I don't agree with and I, I need reimbursed.
Thank you. Any other employee concerns? Okay, moving to old business, first item is the approval of the, the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen budget that was presented earlier.
Uh, the administration recommends the amended budget as presented during the budget hearing.
All right, you've heard the recommendation from administration, they will accept a motion to approve. So, second?
Second.
Nancy?
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Green absent. Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Corley absent. Mrs. Thor?
Yes.
Mr. Rungy?
Yes, motion carries. Item number two is the district financial update. Mr. Grody, this is informational.
Yeah, and as we discussed earlier about the, um, the evidence-based funding, we should get that money rolled into next year, we're expecting that, first payment's in August, I believe, right? Um, and then in the spring, we should hopefully, given the state of the state, see maybe a new dollar that will then go into the following years, and that's kind of the plan with that. I do wanna say that with the budget that they passed, um, a little-known, uh, it took everybody, I think, by surprise, that the TRS fines are now from a six percent. Any, any raises for the retirements of six percents cause a penalty. And the penalty cap has moved from six percent to three percent. And I believe that's why we got an influx of, uh, retirement letters in tonight's thing, because you can still get underneath the old language of the six percent and the bonuses that we do with that. So I just wanna say that, you know, whether the association and I, I, I think what we need to do is really contact our legislators on this, because that's six percent to three percent, the more and more you look at it, the crazier and crazier it is. I mean, somebody moving across, they move a step down and they move across, it almost ties your hands, cause that'll, that'll, that might be over three percent right there.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, so it's cool.
Yeah, so, um... That is the new issue to be settled, and I think that if you can speak to your legislators about that TRS cap, it's just ridiculous, so.
Questions? Thank you. Item number three, the high school auditorium and summer projects update. Again, this is informational.
Yeah, the high school's moving, uh, along quickly. The concrete's getting poured, the steel is almost all up, I believe. You can kinda see where the awning's going to be, you can see where the front doors are gonna be and everything. The elevator, they've torn out most of the things in the middle school, they've got braces up, and I believe next week, there's going to be a very large crane on site dropping the elevator into place, and then they'll be doing the finish work. So both of those projects are moving along nicely.
Any questions from the board? Very good. Item number four, the student parent handbook with building management plans for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen.
Yeah, and the recommendation is to approve, approve them as presented. We did table it at the last meeting. We then had a meeting at the middle school where a bunch of faculty members from the various buildings, uh, were there. We took some language out of the district handbook, leaving it more as the visioning and the missioning, and you can see in your packet that where it was crossed out. And then each building kind of wrote their plans with that. Ms. Thor and Ms. Miller were both at that meeting, is there any comments or?
I'm just wondering if the high schools, like, in the high schools' plan alone, did you kind of regurgitate the whole district plan and then go into your specifics? Yeah.
We, there were only you, Meyer, and you at that meeting that we made.
Right, alright. So the recommendation is to approve that as presented.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Hearing none. You've heard the recommendation from administration for the approval of the student parent handbook and building management plans. I will accept a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second. All in favor? Opposed. Motion carries. Item number five is the authorization of equipment lease purchase agreement. I assume this is Mrs. Bush?
Yes, it is.
It's our final step on this process.
Yes, the, the board approved at the April meeting, I believe, the actual $50,000 lease purchase for Southern Bank. This is just the actual document you get approval to sign the, the lease documents. Uh, to make bank examiners happy, um, that we have all the I's dotted and T's crossed. And, um, so that will, that will be the $920 monthly payments being in August. And, um, administration would ask for board approval of that lease, lease agreement. And ask that Mr. Rungy, uh, Ms. Ward, and myself be given the authority to find, sign those official documents.
Any questions from the board? All right, you've heard the recommendation for the authorization of equipment lease purchase agreement. I will accept a motion to approve. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed. Motion carries. Item number six is the athletic pay for tournaments. Mr. Navarro, I think you have a handout to give to us.
I was asked to keep this brief, so I'll go through it pretty quickly, but, uh, I'm here for any, any questions that you might have. Uh, the current pay scale that we're using, uh, is what we've been using for at least the last 20 years. Uh, I didn't receive a copy of the, the pay scale, uh, until halfway through there. On the packet that you've got, uh, on the left-hand side is, uh, is that document or that pay scale for the last, um...
Just before you get further into this, just a quick question. This is just for tournaments that we host, don't they, correct?
No. No, this is for all.
Okay, then I...
Yeah, it, uh, the agenda says for tournaments.
Right.
I was told to do tournaments and...
So this is everything?
This is athletic workers.
The tournament was the thing that kind of triggered the need to look into this situation.
Basically, because we were about 10 years ago or so, technology changed. IHSA rules changed. For instance, in volleyball, we were required to have a libero tracker. I was paying that person, but it's not on this current. If you look over here, this clearly defined on who I could and who I couldn't pay. And as I got to looking at this, there are people that are on there that we don't even, like chaperones. We don't do chaperones anymore. Security, we don't pay for security at ballgames.
We do, it's a officer.
Correct. Uh, the auxiliary is gracious enough to, uh, you know, that's out of my hands. Uh, over on the right side of the handout that I've given you is. About halfway down, the positions that are not often used. Ticket takers, uh, we've tried to, or I've tried to cut down on expenses for the district. We used to have somebody stand and take tickets at volleyball and at basketball games. I've eliminated that. Uh, because of the overwhelming numbers, we feel like we still need to do it. And with our current setup at football. People can sneak past the ticket booth, so we still do ticket takers for football. Um, again, the reserved chaperones and securities, we don't do. Since I've been the athletic director, uh, some of these positions have evolved. Uh, the libero tracker, I had mentioned. We got new technology with webcasts, also with the video board. Because of the overwhelming problem with, uh, traffic, uh, parking attendant at football games. Chain gang. Uh, chain gang is a group of gentlemen that have volunteered their time for the last, however, long. Uh, I feel like they need to be recognized. Some of these other things like the video board or the webcast, the actual event itself would take place without it. Uh, but a football game can't take place without a chain gang. You have to have them. And I feel like these, these workers need to, need to certainly be recognized as well. Looking at the numbers on some of them. I've got proposed wages there. I, that's really not my decision. I don't feel like that's my decision. I can't tell you and report to you that we have some workers that cover an athletic event that may be making around $4 an hour. And just feel like, uh, I took it upon myself to contact local and neighboring school districts. So Page Two and Page Three are what other school districts are doing. Just to give you an idea of where we stack up against everybody else. I think it's time we probably take a look at it, but, uh, you know, at, uh, you know, in terms of what we spend. I, I really don't feel like that's necessarily for me really to comment on. Uh, tournament workers are a little bit different. Tournament workers basically go into a tournament with the idea that what their pay scale has been depends on the success of the tournament. They know that if the tournament itself doesn't bring in enough money, they may not be getting what the district says. That, you know, they may get $15 a game. Or they may get less than that amount. That's a risk that they take when they work on, on tournaments. Uh, fortunately, our tournaments have been pretty successful, so they've been able to, uh, to make that, um, pretty much that standard pay.
But that's more of a percentage kind of thing? I mean, based on the income, they get a portion.
Correct.
Yeah, so like a percent, okay.
Yeah, and for 20 years, uh, about 20 years, and I ran tournaments here. I think there's only been two tournaments that we haven't made money. And I won't embarrass that sport or single that out. It was just hard to get attendance at that event. But most of our events are enough to where money is made, um, to where that money is then, you know, handed over to the district.
Going with your proposal, what will be at the end of the year, the cost to the district?
Because there are so many variables I don't have. I didn't do the...
Estimate?
I, I could.
Okay.
How much shall we spend this past year on the old numbers?
Uh, that would be a Jan question. I don't have that.
I don't know, because I, I hadn't seen this yet, so.
And, and the reason is like a ticket taker, what I try to do to help the, the district out is, we pretty much have two ticket windows at a basketball game. But if I know that we're playing Lovejoy out of St. Louis and the crowd's going to be really small, I just pay, just hire one person. For the Carbondale football game, I may hire five or six people to take tickets. About three or four, five, six weeks into the season, I scaled back on that. There's just a lot of different variables on, uh, you know, and it's really hard to...
I mean, I, I'll just give you my opinion on it. To me, this is no different. It's a lot different. But we increased the pay for our substitute teachers to make sure that we weren't going to lose them. And I thought that was a very wise decision. I know it's getting harder and harder and harder to find these type of people to do this work. I know it is. Plus, we've got the fact the IHSA is talking about shot clock operators and all the other kinds of... I, I totally understand that. I, I think we've got to do it. That's my opinion.
Yeah, the fourth page of that packet is what I, what Mr. Rungy was talking about. I, I put that out. In fact, it's already out this year for the fall. Uh, I will be calling Nancy and I'll be calling Jan and I'll be begging them to, to sell tickets for me because we just, well, I don't know if it's what we currently pay. Or people just don't want to work. Uh, but I have a tremendous, uh, difficulty filling all of the positions at ballgames.
When will you start calling? Next month? You said you'd start calling, putting it out next month?
This is, this is online. It's, uh, it's going to be handed out to everybody in the district. Uh, it's posted on the website. So with that, I answer...
Any questions from the board on this?
I'd like, I mean, I would just want to know the total cost. At least from last year, to kind of get an idea of what the increase would be.
I'd be happy to give those to you, but I don't...
We could table this until next month.
Yeah, we can look at that and look it back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think I could say that over the last three years, we've done, uh, Jan and I working together, done a variety of things. On ticket prices or eliminating certain passes and doing things that I think we're in a steady increase on. Uh, record-setting numbers on the amount admission is taken in, if you may say. At least probably about three, three years running, but we've had to be pretty creative to do that.
Alright, so we'll bring this back next. Thank you, Mr. Rungy.
Thank you. Item number seven, the approval of the athletic training services agreement.
Yes, we want, you want to do this one?
I can't. We did, uh, take this, take the training, three-year train, training agreement out for bid. Put it in the paper, advertised May 28th, and opened the sealed bids on June 13th. And we received one bid from Athletico at the same amounts that they proposed, um, in April. So, um, $35,000, $36,000, and $37,000 for the three-year, um, three-year period. So it would be, um, administration's recommendation to approve a contract for a three-year agreement with Athletico Management LLC.
So it didn't, they didn't raise it at all?
No.
I feel pretty grateful for that.
Because this is the rate that we negotiated down. They, they gave us a higher rate and we...
They negotiated and then we said, "Oh, wait."
And then they said no, and then they knew they had us over a barrel and they could have raised it whatever they wanted to. Because nobody else did.
So I appreciate that.
We're very gracious, I would say that.
I think they're looking for the long-term relationship, so.
Any other questions? All right, you've heard recommendation from administration for the approval of the athletic training services agreement. I will accept a motion to approve. It's on move. And a second?
Second.
Nancy?
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Dr. Corley, absent. Mrs. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Green absent. Mr. Rungy?
Yes, motion carries. Going to move into new business. The first is the approval of the memorandum or understanding with Centerstone.
And the recommendation is that we renew our understanding with Centerstone. We, um, we use their services and we want to continue.
Do you have a copy of the MOU?
I do.
Can they work with all students or is there...
Uh, they, they work with the students that are necessary, that are needed. Do they instigate or do we instigate on those?
We, we make referrals.
We make referrals, so.
But there's no limit of what students they work with?
No, well, they do have to have a medical card. But Centerstone can see them without a medical card, just not under the school base.
So what happens if they don't have a medical card?
They, we refer them to other services.
They won't even see him? Or no?
They could, we would tell them that they could see them at Centerstone's facilities. They just wouldn't be in the school system if they did not have the medical card.
But they will still see them, but just not at the school.
If the parents transport us in to their facility.
So the school then can act as in local parentis, so they can get counseling then without the parent?
Yeah, I would imagine.
No, you're going to have to consent.
Parents consent. If it's a crisis situation, we can crisis call, you know, and they will still try to get parental consent before seeing the student.
Because it says that, uh, in local parentis can be used, so it really can't then?
We don't.
We don't do that.
It's a, it's a parent's...
Unless, unless we're concerned for somebody's immediate safety, we wouldn't do it without parenting.
Typically with social work, you have so many times you can meet without, before you have to get parental consent, so. Five, is it five?
It's actually changed in the recent legislative session and it's now based on age. So Kate and I, I think, are at five, but at the middle school and high school, they can actually go up to 12.
Any other questions from the board? All right, you've heard the recommendation to approve the memorandum of understanding with Centerstone. I will accept a motion to approve that.
So moved.
And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number two is the approval of Title I plans.
Yeah, and this was, last year was the first time with the ESSA. It did not get modified. It's the same plan as last year. Uh, the recommendation is to approve it. It may be tweaked over the course of this year as we move forward with Resilient Southern Illinois. We started looking at the tri-line form classrooms and whatnot, but really, from last year to this next year. There were no changes. So the recommendation is to approve it as presented.
Any questions from the board? Then I will accept a motion to approve administration's recommendation, the approval of Title I plans. A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number three is to set the board meeting dates for 2018-2019. That was enclosure number one in your packet, which I'm assuming was the same dates we've been using for as long as Jan's been around here.
Third Tuesday and we did move it up to 6:30, which I think has been a nice change, but...
Why is the September one on the 4th?
We have to have, um...
30 days.
30 days between the budget hearing and, and the budget adoption. We put it on display in August and it has to be 30 days.
Any objections or suggestions? If not, then I will accept a motion to approve the board meeting dates as presented. Do you make it?
Wait, when, when did you say that conference was up in Chicago?
November 16th or something.
Oh, okay.
Sixteenth, didn't it? That's Tuesday before four, which is kind of...
Thursday, it's on Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
No, I mean the 20th, so Tuesday, 9th. Is that ever a problem before the Wednesday and everybody's off from the school?
It is.
Yeah, the Tuesday right before. I mean, it won't be a problem for me, but it might be for our rebuild. No?
Right, so we're good? We've got a motion to approve as presented. I need a second.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed. Motion carries. Item number four is the approval of prevailing wage rate ordinance, which is enclosure number two.
This is one of those yearly, um, tasks. It's closed and the recommendation is to approve it as presented.
Any questions? And I will accept a motion to approve administration's recommendation.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Item number five, approval of fiscal depositories.
There's no changes to this, is there?
No change. Um, First Bank and Trust, First Southern Bank, Illinois Funds, and Illinois School District Liquid Asset Funds. So the same, um, fiscal depositories we've been using. And administration would recommend that we continue to do so for the 18, 19 school year.
Further recommendation from administration for the fiscal depositories. I will accept a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now we need to appoint sub-treasurers.
And, um, as in previous years, uh, the administration would recommend our three Kims. Um, Kim Kilpatrick at the high school, Kim Grammer at the middle school, Kim Brown at General John A. Logan. And, um, we conducted interviews, um, yesterday, committee to, um...
Person, name, later.
Secretary at Crowthers. And so, um, pending board approval in closed session, we would, you know, probably bring that name back as sub-treasurer. After executive session. So I would recommend currently these three.
All right, you've heard the recommendation for the appointment of the sub-treasurers. I will entertain a motion to approve that. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Item number seven is the resolution to transfer working cash interest to the education fund.
And this is also an annual thing that we do in order to comply with the Illinois School Code and keep our auditors happy. We roll all the interest earned in the working cash fund into the education fund for operational use. And, um, request board approval to do so legally.
Do we do that at the same time every year? I can't remember.
This, the resolution, yes. Yeah.
All right, you've heard the recommendation from administration for the resolution to transfer working cash interest to the education fund. I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved.
And a second? All in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Item number eight... Item number eight is the resolution to transfer funds from O&M Fund to Debt Service Fund.
And this has to do with our lease purchase agreements. We have a lease purchase levy with our property taxes, and then currently, we have three, getting ready to have a fourth lease purchase agreement. Those funds are levied, and the O&M Fund, we actually have to pay for them as all debt out of the Debt Service Fund. So in order to have the money to do that, the transfer needs to be made each year for those lease purchase agreements on the principal and interest. So administration would recommend board approval of those transfers in order to make those payments out of the correct fund.
All right, you've heard the recommendation from administration on transferring funds for debt service. I will entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. The renewal of property and liability insurance renewal and workman's compensation, school board legal liability, and student accident.
Yes, we have residual renewal for school year starting July 1st, for 18, 19 school year. And received an 8.7% decrease in our total package, $32,745, which was kind of a nice surprise. We had a big decrease, $45,000 in workers' comp. Some of our large claims, they stay on our rate for three to four years, I think. And so some of those large claims have dropped off and given us lower premiums. We did see an increase in our property and liability, which I fully expected. But it wasn't just our district having the insurance claim on our auditorium. Several local districts due to storm damage and different issues that are part of the co-op had claims this year. So we saw a 13% increase in that particular liability, property and liability. We did also have a decrease in our student accident insurance of 25%, which is also great. So total, as I said, $32,000 decrease in our package. And something that Daniel, our agent, talked to me about, and I kind of wanted to throw it out there for the board, is the cyber liability coverage. And I know that's a, I know we have additional security and firewalls to try to protect the district from theft of all employee information, social security numbers, you know, all that information. I know there have been occurrences where a certain percentage of employees of a, not necessarily a school district, but maybe a governmental unit, have had falsely filed tax returns with the IRS. And the question is, did they somehow hack into that system to get that? And so this is a coverage, I think it's kind of a new coverage. It costs a little over $3,000 to have the coverage, a million dollars per current, annual million-dollar aggregate, with a $10,000 deductible for each and every loss. So that would be a $3,000 annual premium. Just kind of wanted to bring it up, get your thoughts on that, on that.
That covers the expense of the employee and all, everything they have to go through to recoup everything? Or it covers us in a lawsuit from that employee, or both?
I think both of those things, that we would have coverage for that. But if somebody hacked into the system, they would hack probably everybody's information. So we're talking about a $10,000 deductible per employee? It's saying per, well, it says each and every loss, so I don't know if it's a one-time event. And, I mean, we're not saying, we could probably pick this up at another time if we have questions. Just saying it wouldn't take very much in deductibles, if that's the case, to get to that million dollars. So then it's kind of makes the insurance not really... Yeah, it's kind of the thing that some people are saying, yeah, no, we don't want to do that. I know that we've already added layers of protection. So, you know, this is something I, automatically, I didn't say, yeah, I think we want to do this. I think, you know, maybe it's worth a little more investigation, but it is available if we so choose to go down that path.
Well, I think we need to get some clarification.
Yeah, one event counts as one loss instead of $10,000.
If we got hacked and every one of our employees' information was taken and they had a loss, that's the question. Is that one loss because it happened all at once? Or is that a hundred and whatever we had?
Right, no, I agree.
Different losses.
So if I'm hearing it correctly, we're recommending that we go with the...
Everything but that.
Everything but that. Do you want us to invite Mr. Yul to the next board meeting to discuss this issue with us?
I can probably just get more information.
You could just get to get more information, probably, because let the board know.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'll probably be talking to Stephen Kevin a little bit more to talk about, you know, what precautions we are taking, just to see. Because, you know, if what we're doing is covering our bases here, you know, it's maybe $3,000 that we absolutely would not need to spend. So it is available, we can talk more about later. But I would recommend that we renew our workers' comp legal liability at the, you know, at the $32,000 reduction in premium.
All right, you've heard the recommendation from administration on our insurances. I will entertain a motion to approve as amended. And a second?
Second.
Nancy?
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Corley absent? Mrs. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Green absent? Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Rung?
Yes, motion carries. Item number 10 is the approval of summer projects over $25,000 to less than $5,000.
Yeah, per our board policy, we need approval for anything over $25,000, and we have to go to bid for anything over $50,000. We were doing summer projects with painting, just maintenance throughout the district. When we added those new teachers, and teachers started moving classrooms and everything, once you get everything off the walls, and you get things away from the walls, you realize it could use some painting. So as we're looking at the extra rooms, we believe that the cost possibly for painting this summer go above the $25,000 threshold. So we're asking for approval. If we don't get it, then we just won't do the painting of those rooms, and they'll go back in the way that they are. But they're empty right now, we'd like to get them painted.
Didn't we just spend $44,000 or something like that last summer on the painting at Crowthers?
Painting and...
We didn't do the gym at our...
We didn't do the gym.
And this is...
We did all the hallways at Crowthers. But there's been, a lot of that also we did with that was at the middle school, a lot of plaster work. So with the painting at the middle school comes plaster. So I don't, I think that...
Right, I was just, because I just remembered we did $44,000 at Crowthers last year, so I was just curious what... Did the cafeteria? We didn't get painted, I guess. The gym. We didn't get the gym painted. We did the hallways, we did the cafeteria.
And it's my understanding, next summer, the general is really needing to be painted, so...
Yeah. The, and the Crowthers also with some exterior, I know some exterior work. But we're dealing with two contractors on the painting to try to get the best prices and...
To get them done.
And hit the timelines as well, because that's...
They're scheduled for other places.
Right. So the McElvein walls, does the grant from Head Start, they don't pay for any of that? That's all on us? They pay us through rent, and then...
So what about the other schools? Middle school and high school? They all look fine?
No, the middle school's getting a lot of the painting. That's what a lot of this is.
Oh, we're not saying...
And the generals next summer.
We're not saying the high school looks fine, it's just with everything else going on. And, you know, areas without power, that's probably going to, once we get the auditory project and the switch gear, I'd say next summer, we're going to be looking at doing, you know, extensive work at the general and quite a bit at the high school as well.
Other questions? All right, you've heard the recommendation from administration for the summer projects, et cetera. I will entertain a motion to approve that. Second?
Second.
Nancy?
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Corley absent? Mrs. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Green absent? Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Rung?
Yes, motion carries. Item 11 is the use of school facilities procedure enclosure number three. This is informational.
Yeah, at this point, we're looking at our policies of the school facility procedures. We've not updated them since I've been here. So we need to update that. I'm asking you to look at those documents. I might ask for some volunteers to sit with me, and we can go over procedures and what we think would be reasonable and understandable, so... Do I have any volunteers? Are you dying to do, what's that?
When are you going to do that?
This summer.
Is it just like a one-night thing?
I think it'd be a one-night thing. You just add two right there, right?
I can, unless Kara really wants to. No, you two already, if you two didn't do it, then do it.
I'm so rare to have people fighting over it. Rock, paper, scissors? Who are my two?
Decide.
Can't have another net.
Okay. Okay. We have a need to go into... All right, we have a need to go into closed session.
I think a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Section 2 of the Open Meetings Act 5, Illinois Statute 120/2C, to review the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees at the district, including hearing testimony on complaint, obstacle, and employee to determine spolidity, and collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representative for deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees.
We've got a motion, I need a second?
Second.
Nancy?
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorr?
Yes.
Dr. Corley absent? Mr. Green absent? Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Rung?
Yes, motion carries. Let's take five?